Okay. Called a meeting to order, Pitt County Board of Education. A regular session on March the 2nd, 2015, at 7:00 in the 3rd floor boardroom, Pitt County Office Building. And called to order, and we had, uh, everybody is present. Shaun's out in the audience, and he'll be joining us shortly. Uh, pledge of allegiance. Uh, Shaun Kenny.
Mr. Chair, we have a special guest who's gonna lead us in the pledge now.
How about that? That's one thing.
I'm Sinajra Dillard.
And you are here as a result of?
Um, I'm the Women's Indoor Pole Vault Champion.
So you're the one that goes in the air?
Yes.
Alright.
There we go. Well, let's get in the air and do the pledge.
Name your school, baby.
North Pitt High School. Thank you. Our pledge is-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we have a moment of silence. We wanted to be, uh, make sure and be thankful for our kids, and, uh, continue to pray for our kids and the parents, and, uh, the safety of them, and hoping that, uh, their discipline and anti-bullying programs are working, and that programs that we have in place, instructionally, are working. That, uh, we just wanna pray that those, uh, all of those programs are working for our kids. And let's, uh, bow our heads and have them all in silence. Dear Lord, we thank you for what you do for this system, for the people who work in this system, and the students and parents. We pray for their safety. We thank you that no one was hurt during the inclement weather. We thank you for the decisions that were made, Lord. Uh, they were great decisions, and they had the best interests of our students and safety in mind. We thank you for that, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, uh, routine business. Uh, we'll look down at adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Benji made the motion, Mark seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Alright, at this time, we'll have Spotlight on Teaching and Learning. Brock.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, first tonight for the Spotlight, you've already met, um, the young lady who's one of the two people we're gonna recognize in the, uh, first part of Spotlight. I want to ask Dr. Lionel Cato, the principal of North Pitt High School, to come up and introduce his coaches, and they'll talk to you a little bit more about a couple of state champions from the school.
Good evening, board members. Very proud to be here tonight, uh, with my two students. Wonderful, wonderful, outstanding representatives of this student body at North Pitt High School. Uh, first up, I want to bring up Coach Mazen Helder, our wrestling coach, and he's gonna introduce a fabulous young man to you, and explain his accomplishments.
Thank you, Dr. Cato. Um, I'm the wrestling coach in North Pitt. I've been out there for about six years now as an assistant and head coach. And I've had the absolute privilege of coaching Angel Nahar. Um, he has worked harder and done things the right way. Um, he's probably the hardest-working young man I've ever met. Um, I had the privilege of teaching him honors English II and coaching him at the same time, and eventually seeing him accomplish his goal, which was to win a state championship. Um, so, Angel, congratulations.
Mr. Brock. So you want me to come up next?
Yeah.
Angel, on behalf of the Pitt County Board of Education, we proudly recognize you for creating excellence in the East, and representing our school system, and, and we, uh, know you'll be a good role model for other students, and we appreciate all you did. Thank you.
And the second, uh, student that we want to bring up is Sinajra Dillard. Um, she's here with her family, her mother and father, and her sister. Um, also another outstanding young lady. Both these students have outstanding GPAs. They have colleges that they're, um, looking at going to. Um, Sinajra is, um, one of our honor students, and leads on the field as well as in the classroom. So, I'm gonna have Coach Morris, who is our track coach, come up and tell you some more about Sinajra.
I have stuff wrote down, so give me one second. Cece has been with me, um, all four years. Um, I've been at North Pitt for 11 years. This is my 11th year at North Pitt. And, um, we really didn't have pole vault when she started. Um, we were gracious enough to get a donation from one of our families, um, north of us, and we were able to get pole vault. And thanks to Coach Butler, we did a lot of paperwork, and we were able to, to have that. So we've had that now for about four years, and, um, Cece took that in her own strides and has done very well. For indoor season, which we call winter track, because we run outside all winter. But she is back, uh, our back-to-back EPC champion for the pole vault. Um, she is also, um, in outdoor track, um, our EPC conference champion, as well as the 2A East Regional Champion, for last spring. Um, so we're hoping for good things this spring, with her coming in as the indoor state champion. Hopefully, good things for outdoor track as well, so. So, Cece, you wanna come on down?
Pitt County Board of Education proudly recognizes, and I think you prefer Cece. Is that right? For creating excellence in the East, and the Board of Education is very proud of you, and all of Pitt County, and I'm sure your coaches and your, uh, peers are also. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Now, the next two individuals I think most of you are familiar with. We wanted to bring them in tonight to recognize them formally, you know, in front of the board. And I'm gonna introduce them individually, and then, um, tell you a little something about what they're doing. First, I'm gonna ask our Pitt County Schools Teacher of the Year and Region One Teacher of the Year, Jamie Dickerson, from Eastern Elementary, to come up here. And now, I would also like for Mr. Steve Lassiter, who is our Pitt County Schools Principal of the Year and Region One Principal of the Year, to come up. Now, why did they earn these titles? Well, they're gonna tell you here in just a second, something they're working on. They're not just content with being Regional Teacher of the Year and Principal of the Year. They've got something in the works that will help us as a district with recruiting, retaining quality beginning teachers. So, uh, ask them to come up and talk to you a little bit about that.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
Jamie and I are working together because we believe that it's imperative to be able to retain good-quality teachers, not only in North Carolina, but in our home district, Pitt County Schools. Uh, so what we've decided to do is to have a beginning teacher rally for all 400 BTs in Pitt County Schools. And, uh, during our rally, uh, we decided that we, we're going to, focus on recruitment and retention, and staying in Pitt County Schools, um, and, and letting them know how important they are to us and why we need them.
So, something that I've learned as a teacher is we love to be celebrated. And so, one thing that we wanna do is we wanna use our vision, which is relationships, relevancy, and rigor. We call it the three Rs. To help them, to celebrate them, to let them know that they can do it. And we're gonna do a theme, very teachery, where the wild things are and the letters stand for, that teachers can-
Win, inspire, lead, and dominate the teaching profession.
So, we wanna celebrate them. We're gonna give them, or have a BT from each school that's gonna get an award. We're gonna have fun. We're gonna celebrate. And we're hopefully gonna motivate them to go on through the next part of the school year, which is known to be kind of tough towards the end.
So our goal, too, is to invite the state, uh, Teacher of the Year to come down, and possibly the state Principal of the Year to share in this session with us, and to be sure that we, uh, share what we're going to do, not only in this session, but across northeastern North Carolina, in all, hopefully, 15, uh, school districts in our region. So that's a little bit about what we're doing.
Yep, and we're excited.
That's great.
Uh, this, the BT rally is gonna be March 17th at Eastern Elementary, and we wanted you to know that you are all more than welcome to attend. So please feel free. It'll be at 5:30 at Eastern on March 17th.
Pitt County Board of Education proudly recognizes you, Steve, for creating excellence in the East, all your hard work, and also to you, Jamie, the same thing. And, uh, we appreciate you being in Pitt County. Appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. Leave Pitt County. I hope you find you. You're that what I said about. So we expect you to stay here for a while and do a good job. And we appreciate what you do.
I'd like to give them a standing ovation.
Be in the beach. You better be lucky doing silent prayer. I won't do it in the morning. I've thought about it.
Brock, how about you coming up?
I've got a blue Jesus on me.
You got a bad heart?
I ain't worried about you.
I got a good heart now.
Brock, we want to recognize you for, uh, you winning your webpage award. Uh, you won the design award at State Public Information Officers, and that was a statewide competition. And that webpage is great. It serves our county well. And we appreciate all the hard work that you do, all the phone calls that you get, all of those that really tell you what the county is like. You really know what the county is like. You put, uh, you make, uh, give them the facts, and let them know that we do have a great system, and, uh, that you have a webpage here that shows part of how excellence in the East is within our county. And we appreciate all you do. And so, the Pitt County Board of Education proudly recognizes Mr. Lekwer-
Thank you.
-for creating excellence in the East. Give him a-
We gotta get a picture.
Stand a little bit over there. You're so tall. I should stand on the stem.
It's never dawn me this.
She never dawn.
Still needed, still needed a booster.
I know, still need one.
Okay, we've got, uh, public expression. We've got three, and, um, let's see. Bruce Raper, uh, I'd like for him to come up. He's got a "thank you" here, and we would love to hear what you had to say.
I told Brock, I said, "I don't know if you guys are used to this or not."
We'll take it.
Good evening. I'm, I'm, it's a ple, my pleasure to address you. My name is Bruce Raper, and my home is here in Greenville, North Carolina. And I simply do wanna say thank you to Dr. Linker, thank you to Michael Cowan, in addition to saying thank you to the entire, uh, staff of, of Pitt County Schools. In addition to you, the governing board of Pitt County Schools. I'm employed with, excuse me, Mark III Employee Benefits, which is based out of Charlotte, North Carolina, but my home is here in Greenville. And I have the privilege of working very closely with people like Colleen Paramore and Mr. Cowan, and several others here with Pitt County Schools. And it is a privilege to service the employee benefit plans, the Section 125 plans for Pitt County Schools. And if I can ever be of service to either one of you, Mr. Cowan has several of my business cards with my personal cellphone number and my address on it, email address. Please don't hesitate to contact me. I'll be glad to meet with you, one-on-one, and explain exactly what we make available. And thank you for your time, and again, just let me say thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Kim and Michael Francis, Pillowcase Project, American Red Cross.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to talk a little bit tonight. I'm passing around some information about the Pillowcase Project with the American Red Cross. In, uh, 2005, there's actually two pieces there of, uh, printed material for you. In 2005, when Hurricane Katrina hit, in the Superdome down in New Orleans, they were noticing that a bunch of the college students were walking around with pillowcases thrown over their shoulders. And the Red Cross volunteers were asking them, "Well, why do you have your pillowcases? And what's in your pillowcases?" And they were explaining that when the storm hit, and they had to evacuate, the only thing that they had with them that they could grab in a hurry was to pull their pillow out, out of their pillowcase, and put their materials, their personal materials that they wanted to keep with them into the pillowcase and go off to the shelter. The Red Cross in that area took this information and expanded upon that, and decided to formulate a program to go into the elementary schools, and the target is 3rd grade through 5th grade, and to teach preparedness, disaster preparedness. There's some printed information on there about that. We were fortunate enough to have Walt Disney Corporation partner with us and provide us with materials and a three-year grant to bring this information to elementary schools, 3rd through 5th grade, throughout the country. The reason that I'm here tonight is to introduce this information to you, and hopefully start a dialogue so that we can introduce the Pillowcase Project to the Pitt County Schools. And you'll have to apologize, I'm not familiar with the format here, but I'm available for questions if someone has a few questions.
Usually, what we do is you just present, and we listen.
Okay. Well, Kim Francis, my wife's contact information is on there. If this is something that you'd like to look at and talk about further, give her a call, and we'll be glad to come out and give you some more information on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, uh, 2015 Comprehensive Recreation and Park Master Plan. Rita and James. You gonna let Rita? Rita, you got five minutes.
I've got five, don't start it yet.
We start.
We have recently completed, first of all, members of the board, thank you for having us, and thank you for your time. And we do have James Rhodes and Alice Keane here from Pitt County. We've completed a, a comprehensive recreation master plan for Pitt County. And, um, many of you who don't know us real well might be saying, "Why are we standing in front of you?" So much of what was inventoried and, and the approach we took in Pitt County, you took 35, 37 years ago, was to use school facilities as a resource for recreation in Pitt County. And, and it's, it's made us very unique when it's all said and done. So, given that most of the recreation facilities in the county are because of school system, because of the school system, we thought it was important to keep you up to date in what was going on. So, currently, we have, y'all seeing this? Okay. Um, this is the 32-acre park that we're in now that has the building. We have the Council on Aging there, the animal shelter, and the recycling center across the street, the two elementary schools, the community garden, the Village of Yesteryear. The trail, you'll see all the trail there that connects the schools to everything that's out there. Um, we do a program with the community garden with our kindergarteners from, um, Wintergreen all year long, and through our after-school program all year and during the summer. That's where we're at so far, as far as county-owned recreation facilities. This project was, um, a collaborative effort. You see, Pitt County Schools through community schools and recreation, planning and development, public health, engineering, soil-water conservation, buildings and grounds, and community partners and, and volunteers. First thing they did, oops, gotta do this, was the citizen input, done through, um, the ECU Center for, um, survey research. And this is all in a book that you'll have, the, the summary. The, um, most importantly, 84% of the people felt that parks and recreation facilities and programs were critical to the quality of life. Um, and I won't read all these to you, but down here, you'll look in satisfaction with the quality and availability and location of parks and recreation facilities. In Pitt County, our parks, our school, our playgrounds on school facilities are neighborhood parks. And, and most of them are available after school hours and on weekends. And I'm not hitting those too good. I'm worried about my time here. Okay. They looked at inventory, public recreation facilities, programs, and public parks. And what they're finding, of course, is the joint use of facilities plays a key role in, in what is provided throughout Pitt County. And Pitt County is recognized as a national model with CDC for providing physical activity spaces close to the citizens in a large rural county. Um, and that, that's a pretty big deal, um, for Pitt County. Then, you'll see that we're behind in most facilities, even with school facilities being available. And when we look at gyms and things like that that we think should be available, we can only count them 40 to 50% of the time because schools, schools have them. Schools have them till 9:00. So many times, the, the fact that they're there is not helpful. Their recommendations, and this is in detail in your book, are just to maintain our relationships, increase funding opportunities, and, and continue to prepare and update the master plans and the site plans. This was done through a transformation grant, community transformation grant, to get the master plan done. And we're also in the process of updating the site plan for the first map that you, that you currently saw. Um, when you look at, at the six dimensions of, of health, we, we hit those. But, you know, many of the, the programs that we offer help us provide and help with the, you know, the leading, there's my time, right? When you look at what our leading causes of death are, and obesity plays a big role in that, we are, we make available facilities throughout the county for trails, playgrounds, gyms, and, and open space for folks to be physically active. We have provided this information to the county commissioners this morning, and they will vote to accept or adopt this plan in a later meeting in March.
Oh, you do, we're perfect. Thank you so much, Rita. Okay, at this time, consent items. Uh, motion to approve the consent items?
To approve them.
Okay, Ms. Mildred made the motion to approve and Mark seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, they, uh, pass. New business, Caroline and Cheryl, EPS committee update.
Thank you so much, Cheryl. We had a great meeting on February 16th. Um, all three members of our committee were present, and Benji Forrest joined us as well. We had a quorum, and Cheryl, I've asked her to give us a brief report-
Okay.
-on what we covered.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chair, board members. Uh, we had, the first agenda item that was discussed at the EPS Board Committee meeting was we had had a concern about an AP course offered at a high school. And so, we had invited Bill Frazier, who's the 912 Director, to come in and talk about the process for offering, for AP course offerings. He explained several factors that, uh, that controlled the offering of AP courses. And of course, that is student interest, and notice how many students you have that wanna take the course, the allotment of teachers, and whether or not you can get it scheduled. And then whether or not the teachers are qualified to teach it. They have to be, their syllabus has to be approved by the college board and those kind of things. Uh, and so, you know, AP course offerings can change from one year to the next, depending on who your staff is, and depending on how many students wanna take a course. So, to sort of help with that process, we have created an AP task force that's, uh, that, uh, is created from one representative from each of the high schools. And, um, we also put our registration guide this year online. And all of the AP course offerings are offered through that online registration so that kids in every school can see what AP course offerings are possible. So what we do is, once they finish registering online, we will look to see how many kids from different schools wanting to take a course that may not be offered at that school. And so then, we'll look at, how can we get kids across the district into this AP course offering? Whether it's a blended class, whether it's an online class, whether it's, um, transportation issues that we possibly can overcome. Uh, but anyway, we're gonna look to see if we can fairly and, and as much as possible, give as many opportunities to kids across the district. So we're looking at that, and we are waiting to get the registration completed before we move forward with that. The second agenda item was a, uh, sort of a continuation from the last meeting, which was an update on, in a discussion of our bullying and what we're doing with bullying. We do have hotlines now assigned to all of the schools, a bullying hotline that's assigned to each school so that, um, parents and students can call the hotline at any point in time to make a report. These are not up and running yet. They are just being set up, but every school has one. Our technology department is actually working on a way that so when a call comes in, the person responsible for checking that will get an email alerting them that a call came in so that it's not so cumbersome to keep up with. Uh, we, uh, Ms. Doherty also recommended that once we get all of it set up, that the principals do an alert now or connect ed-call to all the parents and students, letting them know that it exists. Then we looked at policy 10.200, which in that policy, it states, "The superintendent shall evaluate the effectiveness of efforts to correct or prevent discrimination, harassment, and bullying, and shall share these evaluations periodically with the board." So we discussed what that should look like as a report to the board. We decided, on a spreadsheet, at the beginning of the school year, as much for the paper as for the board members, with the, with the school name, programs that that school has as far as awareness of bullying, what bullying is, and making students aware of bullying, and then also what programs they have to intervene for bullying, along with hotlines and those kind of things. And then, as the- And then, as the year goes on, we'll come to the board with a report of how much the hotline's been used and how many incidences were with that, and kind of how to track that. So, that was decided at the last EPS Board Committee meeting. The third item was the driver education resolution, which is in your packet on page 17. I think Ms. Doherty's gonna cover that in just a few minutes. Ron Butler graciously found from the State Board a recommended resolution. The Board Committee approved, sending it to the full board for it to be discussed tonight and voted on. The last item on the agenda was the beginning conversations about open enrollment. This is the time of year when we start discussing what schools we are looking at for possible open enrollment for students. We presented the Board Committee with a comparison of the school's capacity with their enrollment numbers, so that we could start to look at what percentage of the school is already being taken up with students. We started looking at that. It was decided that we needed some additional information before we started moving forward. Dr. Linker asked the committee, as they start to discuss this in the future, to start looking at feeder patterns, because you want to make sure that if you open an enrollment of one school, that they have somewhere to go after that feeder. So, Mr. Witcher made a motion to table that discussion until the data had been collected that they had requested, basically on what kind of transfers we get now, what's the reasons for the transfers, what kind of programs are at the different schools that might impact some of the transfer requests, those kind of things. So, we're gathering that information, and we'll be bringing it to the next EPS Board Committee meeting. So, with that, the meeting was declared adjourned. And are there any questions?
Cheryl.
Ms. Olmstead.
Mm-hmm.
This AP task force, is that the same task force that Mr. Jeb Smith sits on from Rose High?
Yes, that's the one that's been formed.
Yeah. Okay. Well, he's an excellent choice for that, so I'm pleased to hear that. Thank you.
Are there any more questions? I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Mildred.
I have a question also, if you would. Ask them to check with the Durham City Schools, because they've been doing this process already, and they have a much better system than we do with AP. And it was discussed in detail at the policy meeting that I attended.
Okay.
And so, I think that would be a good role model for us.
Okay, we'll check it out then.
Because our goal is to really, and they're doing it, they're making sure every child that wants to tackle AP can and not be limited, because it saves money when that child goes to college, they don't have to take the course.
That's right.
And it saves time. So, it's a win-win for that child and his family and for our school system to have more kids that are just as bright as other kids are that have not had the opportunity because of certain things happening at the eighth grade level when they get ready to go to high school, a lot of times they're not recommended. And then sometime, parents are just lazy and let the children be the boss. And I detest that. So, we got to encourage our parents to know it makes no sense for a child to be taking low-level courses when they can be taking high-level courses. Like I used to tell my boys, you work the books, and we will work your place to stay and give you some food to eat. That's your job.
Mr. Carr.
And they did it, and it worked. Saved us a whole lot of money.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Caroline said, I'm not a member of that committee, but they graciously allowed me to be in the meeting with them, and I had some good conversation. And the thing that concerned me, I think that AP was brought up because of a concern that I had, and the thing that I got reassured, I think, at least I feel a lot better about, is that when it was presented, it was presented such that it will be very carefully looked at and, as much as possible, fairly presented to all of our kids in the future, so that some of the situations that I brought to your attention maybe don't come up again.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. Caroline?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution concerning driver's education funding on page 17. I need to read that.
Second.
You need to read it.
I do? Okay. Resolution concerning driver's education funding.
So that our public knows what we're adopting.
Whereas local school districts in North Carolina are legally required to provide and operate driver education courses, and whereas costs for operating driver education courses have historically been covered by earmarked appropriations from the Highway Trust Fund, and whereas driver education is a key component of the graduated driver's license program, which has effectively helped reduce teen motor vehicle accidents and fatalities, and whereas the 2014 state budget moved all Highway Trust Fund appropriations for the driver education program to non-recurring for 2014-15, and stated it was the state's intent to eliminate the funding in its entirety beginning July 1, 2015, and whereas school districts have the authority to charge fees to driver education participants, but that fee is capped at $65 per student, while the estimated operational cost per student is estimated to be between $170 and $350. And whereas, if the state follows through on the elimination of funding for the driver education program, it would impose yet another unfunded mandate on local school systems, who would have to find a way to cover a substantial gap between the allowable maximum fee that can be charged and the actual cost of operating this required program. And whereas, an unfunded driver education mandate would force school districts to either take drastic cuts to instructional services, which would harm students in the classroom, or cut back access to the driver education program through reduced services, which would cause some students to be denied the invaluable and successful training of the graduated licensing program. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Education strongly objects to an unfunded driver education mandate. Therefore, be it further resolved that the Pitt County Board of Education respectfully requests that the General Assembly revisit its decision to sunset driver education program funding on July 1, 2015, and either restore the full Highway Trust Fund allocation or establish another funding source that does not cut into other education allotments.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And Mary seconded. We got discussion?
Before, I thought about this, being involved with driver's education, doing the thing, if it be conflict of interest, if I was on it?
I might go vote as well, Mr. Chairman. I recuse. If they feel, don't feel comfortable.
If you don't feel comfortable, just refuse.
I don't want to get in conflict of interest.
Just don't vote. Okay?
I mean, you know, by the way.
And you're not voting, you don't feel right. Okay.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if they don't vote, means that they've got to recuse themselves.
Are you recusing yourself?
Yeah, recusing yourself.
My what?
Recusing yourself.
Yeah. I want to do that to be honest.
All right, now.
That way, we won't be in a conflict of interest anymore.
What is the basis, if I may ask, for the recusal?
He works with. He works with drivers, the driver's education program.
And my dad's an employee of the driver's education system.
I mean, if they want to recuse themselves, they have the right to do that. All right, we've got a motion on the floor. We've got, it's been seconded. Any other discussion? All right, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, passed. All right, next, we have the Finance Committee update.
Do we have a report?
Well, have.
The chair and we just.
Don't report just to be reporting. Do we have a report?
We have a small report, and I'm gonna turn it over to Michael Cowan at this time.
He never has a small report.
Our committee meeting ran into inclement weather conditions last week, but I do have some information that I had planned on presenting at the meeting. Before we get started on that, though, I would like to say that Dr. Linker, Matt Johnson, and myself had an opportunity to go down to the county commissioners this morning and present the capital needs that was approved, a $26 million capital needs project that was approved by the board last November. And Matt did an excellent job of rolling through each one of the different projects, and he just wanted me to make sure that each one of you knew you had a copy of the presentation that was presented today to the county commissioners. We will be providing some additional information to them to maybe clarify some of the responses that were given today. And also, we'll be waiting for the Pitt Community College to also give a presentation to the community college, to the county commissioners, before a decision is made with concerns to the future capital funding. What I want to spend a few minutes tonight talking to you about is the proposed budget, the local budget for 2015-16. You know, this is, and now we're in the month of March, we are knee-deep into this as far as projecting out next year's local operations, with a lot of information to come forward through the state here in the very next few weeks. Before we get started, I want us to put it up on the screen. We have to remember that the governor has not yet released a budget. The General Assembly has not yet released any information relevant to next year's proposed budget, at least I would say relevant in our discussion here tonight. I would say that the state revenues are projected to be $270 million below budget based off of the latest fiscal research report given to the General Assembly. That is not good. And DPI has not yet released planning allotments for the 2016 school year, and we still have a few months before a budget will be presented to the county commissioners for approval. What we want to talk tonight about are various considerations that the local proposed budget is being built upon as we speak. And I've pretty much got a draft copy of the proposed budget for next year, and I want to just spend a few minutes talking about those. It includes projected increases in fixed costs, new money requests to our county commissioners, and the impact of reductions in ADM and the opening of two charter schools on our local operations for next school year. First of all, the projected increase in fixed costs. Right now, we are looking at about a $1 million requested increase in county appropriations just to be able to maintain the current level of operations here within Pitt County schools. 90% of that comes in the form of salary and benefits, while another $100,000 in projected increase in liability insurance coverage. When we break down the parameters used to develop the fixed cost increases, approximately $497,000 of that increase is coming from the projected increase in beginning teacher salary. As you know, last year, the state government made a concerted effort to increase that beginning teacher salary rate to $33,000 per teacher, with the hopes of increasing that up to $35,000 within the 2015-16 budget. I do believe that has a very, very good chance of happening next year, given the individuals that have already gone on record about that. That would be about $497,000 increase to our operations just to cover the salary increases, going from $33,000 to $35,000. I've also got in here temporarily a 1.5% increase in other state employees' salaries. And this is not based off of any information, per se, from the state government, except for the fact that we made that a high priority when we discussed that with our legislative group last week. And the information that Dr. Linker shared, I'll quote some of that for you here tonight, last week. Since 2009, the average salary for our maintenance employees only increased $82.55 since 2009 to 2015. A bus driver's average salary's only increased $75 per month. A custodian's average salary's only increased $77 per month, and office support individual's salary has only increased $81 per month. Now, we challenge our General Assembly to realize that there's individuals out there who are classified individuals that are dependent on the livelihood of their salaries, and that's a very, a very small amount of increase over a six- or seven-year period of time. We ask that they recognize that. We also have various increases in benefit rates for health insurance and retirement built into here, into the budget so far, and also a $100,000 increase for workers' comp unemployment and other property insurance, liability insurances. I will be waiting anxiously for, at the end of the year, to find out where our workers' comp comes in. Hopefully, I'll be able to reduce that amount based off of our actual utilization of workers' comp premium. New money requests. Within the proposed budget that stands right now, we have approximately $1,174,000 requested of new money. That would include a 1% increase in teacher supplement of about $874,000, as well as a $300,000 increase in providing staff development instruction for our teachers, instructional staff. As you know, and we talked about again last week with our legislative group, with the race to the top dollars disappearing, we are left with absolutely nothing, basically, to provide instructional staff development for our teachers. And we need to understand that we can't develop great teachers if we don't have the resources to do so. This is very important to our operations, and we will make, just like we did last year, make a reasonable effort to ask the county commissioners to provide additional funding. Here's a breakdown of the increase in the teacher supplement. Right now, our 5% teacher supplement totals a budget of approximately $3.5 million. If you break that down by percentage, that's about $709,000 it would cost to increase the percentage from 5% to 6%, along with the added benefits, FICA and retirement on that. It is pastime that we increase the teacher supplement within Pitt County schools. It has not been increased since I've been here, and I'm in here 12 years, and I think that's a travesty in many ways. We need to do everything we can to work with our county commissioners to provide that funding. This will be the second year in a row that we've provided that in the proposed budget at a minimum 1%. It's not too much to ask for. The third item impacting the proposed budget this year are new charter schools. And as we know, there are two charter schools that are opening up to begin operations next school year. That's Winterville Charter and Ignite Charter. Based off the applications that have been submitted to the Department of Public Instruction, they're looking at somewhere around a 700 opening enrollment for the first year. Again, we have no exact word of what their actual enrollment will be. We just have the applications that has submitted to the Department of Public Instruction for approval. Based off of the fact that our county appropriations are approximately $1,500 per student, that would mean that we have about $1.1 million next year that would need to be submitted, paid to our charter schools. And what do I mean by that? Well, a $1.1 million reduction or payment to charter schools basically represents a projected $1.1 million in county appropriations that Pitt County schools will be required to pay the new charters based off of actual enrollment. In other words, it represents $1.1 million that Pitt County would have to redirect within our current budget just to be able to maintain or to be able to cover this $1.1 million payment. Ultimately, that represents a budget shortfall within next year's budget. And I will say, this is just a local impact. This does not represent the reduction in state allotments that will result from a reduction in students that will move to a charter school enrollment. So, to summarize this, we've talked very quickly about three items: fixed costs, new money, and projected impact of charter schools. Again, I'd like to ask you to remember that the governor nor the General Assembly has released any budget to Pitt County schools or to other LEAs. DPI has not yet released a planning allotment for Pitt County schools. In fact, if you remember, the law was changed where they really don't have to, but that's a different conversation. And the proposed budget will not be submitted to the county commissioners until the May timeframe. But we do have to realize, however, that increase in beginning teacher salary will have an impact on our local budget just in order to maintain the number of local positions that we're funding, and that we will have to deal with dollars that are leaving the school system and county appropriations to cover the cost of students that move into the charter school arena. That's where we are right now, and as we have next, on this next month's meeting, we'll continue to provide you more information about where we are with the local budget. And actually, once the governor comes out with a proposed budget, and then the General Assembly, the House, or the Senate, whichever one takes it up first, starts to kick it around, we'll also get more information that comes out, and we will build a budget around all these different scenarios, the governor's proposal, the House's budget proposal, and as well as the Senate, so we'll give the board a full indication of what we can expect moving into next year's financial operations. Do we have any questions?
All right.
Charter schools, they send you a list of the names of the students.
That's right.
To you, to be paid. Do you check that list against what?
Exactly. We send it up to Student Services, and that list has the student's name, the identified address, which is in the state system. I send that up to the Student Services Department, and they verify each one of those individuals.
They verify they're in that school before we pay them.
Exactly, that's right. Not only that, but as students start to drop out of the charter school, enrollment reduces, maybe it comes back to Pitt County schools or not, I also adjust the payments to them as that occurs as well. We try to make sure we minimize the dollars to the utmost.
I just didn't want to be sure they were just the students.
And we find very often that there's individuals that might have a Griffin address or, you know, an address in the outline part of the county that actually do not reside in Pitt County, and we will adjust those dollars according, those positions according.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mike. Human Resources Committee update.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just the same as the Finance Committee, and Clement Weather kept prohibit us from having a meeting, but we did send some information to you that we put together in your packet, and basically to talk about the things that we're gonna talk about in our next HR committee meeting. But before I go over that, I did want to celebrate two things. In working with Jamie Dickinson and Steve Lassiter, they're two, they're like a dynamic duo. The two of them came and said they wanted to do something together, so that you'll have the beginning teacher symposium. And also, we have the billboard that's in Winterville, right there in the Y, that has a picture flashing of them as well. And I've already talked to Brock, if somebody wins a state, I want 264 to have a sign and billboard there. So, he's. So he's going to work on that. And also, Mr. Tom Fowler and Seth Brown, their teacher career ladder plan was mentioned in the article for ednc.org, which is written about legislative reports. And so they're going to meet with actually Representative Craig Horn on tomorrow to discuss. We were noted in that particular article of having a detailed and comprehensive plan and not just one that asks for money. So I would like to publicly recognize the two of them for their hard work by getting that turned in on January 15th. So, very proud of them as well. Several items that we're going to talk about in our next meeting that were sent to you, we do have to update our non-renewal policy, which is dealing with the renewal of teachers that are coming to us that are in their beginning years. They're now on one-year contracts, and our policy is still under the old prefaces of career status and probationary, so that will need to be updated. As well, we had a petition from Pitt County branch of NCAE to ask for due process rights, which means that our teachers that have been with us for four years, that are on one-year contracts because they could not earn tenure, if we, the board, would consider to have them to be on the right to have a guaranteed hearing. One thing that tenure gave them was the right of a guaranteed hearing. So now that no one will have tenure from this point, after those that already have career status, they had asked that we would consider, and a resolution will be brought to you probably on the next month, to say if you will consider this of giving our fourth year beginning teachers, our fourth-year teachers that have a proficient evaluation and have been with us for four consecutive years, and we would give them due protection rights of a guaranteed hearing. So I would like for you to go back and look over that proposal from NCAE, PCAE. And I have surveyed our principals, and out of the ones that completed the survey, 20 out of 21 supported that process as well. And we're using and talking about it as a retention tool. Wake County actually got a couple weeks, a week or so ahead of us to propose that, but they're doing it as a retention tool as well to give to those people that have worked for them for four years, which you know from our data with teacher turnover, mostly is our beginning teachers that leave us by the fifth year. So that's something to consider as well. And other documents that were in there was regarding a report for classified resignations and also the number of teacher assistants that had moved up to teaching positions or other positions in our district. So we'll be discussing all that in March, at the end of the month. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Comments by the superintendent?
Just real quick, the last couple of weeks have been pretty interesting around eastern North Carolina. I'd like to thank Matt Johnson and the entire maintenance department, Joey Weddington, and all the transportation guys for hitting the roads at 4:00 in the morning some of those times and giving me some feedback. There were a couple of days when, you know, I'd walk out of my house, and I'm sure my neighbors are like, why are we delaying school again? And then we get reports from Bethel and out northwest that it's a little dicey over there. Even had Ms. Williams send me a little text one day, said, you know the roads over here, what they look like? Yes, ma'am, we're getting it, so. But thank those guys for hitting the roads and helping with those decisions, communicating with the people in the county, so we know what these roads look like. And Brock for making all his phone calls. So I'm sure, if you remember that, the last phone call he made, he was about tired of making phone calls.
Yeah. That's why he was recognized.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I would just like to say I appreciate Matt and all of them for making those decisions, and plus making them as early as you could make them so it would accommodate our parents so that they could make plans. I heard a lot of positive comments regarding that, that you didn't wait till the last minute. You went ahead and made the decision, and I didn't hear any negative regarding counseling schools on those days where it north of the river, because I think the television and our weathermen even, and as well as the newspaper, talked about and stressed that the roads were treacherous at the northern part, the north side, yep. And there was snow there even several days afterwards where there wasn't any on the southern part. Another thing that I would just like to mention, I know charter schools and private schools, they're not a thing in the past, they're a thing in the future, and it's something that we're going to have to deal with. And Pitt County schools, we're going to have to do all we can to keep our students in our school system. And we just need to find reasons and look at reasons of why these kids are leaving, and then we have to address those needs, and sometimes we're going to have to make hard decisions, whether it be the reasons why they're leaving or because they say instruction or because of discipline or whatever. But we have to look at everything and so that we can retain as many students as possible. I would also say that those, the lila regarding those fourth-year teachers, I do believe they deserve a hearing. And I just think that would help in that whole process and give them some stability of being safe within our system. And I'm thankful that Human Resources is looking at that. That's all I have. Billy? Walter? Any comments? Mary?
Yes, I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Lassiter. Again, this one, being the Regional Principal of the Year along with, I did write her name down.
Jamie? I'm sticking.
Yeah, over at Eastern Elementary School. And that's a wonderful idea for them to help the new beginning teachers to come along, you know, to assist them, because it's hard starting in a new system and to teach retention is one of those things. And to invite Mr. Ford, who is the, you know, the State Teacher of the Year to our area is going to be a big plus. And March, I think it says 17th, is going to be the date that he's here. So I invite, you know, all, they said everybody was welcome, if we can get some kids there to meet this young man, it would be a nice thing to do. He's a very well-rounded young man. We've had an opportunity to hear him speak on several occasions. Tom Fellows and Seth Brown did a next-gen presentation at Rose High School when we attended the legislative breakfast. I'd like to thank Carol and LaReta and the other senior staff for putting together, they did a next-gen job that day, you know, on our behalf. I'm going to take Billy in a minute, they didn't say anything.
You've got 25 seconds.
And I'd like to thank Dr. Jackson for her presentation this evening. And most of all, I'd like to thank my two students from North Pitt, the young lady, I cannot, I don't know what I did. Uh-huh, Cece. I was very proud of her, the shot, the, uh, my, uh, coval person and Dr. Pedro for presenting her, and also the wrestler.
Thank you. Angie?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want to congratulate Ms. Tabitha Hudson and the DECA program out at DH Conley for another successful year at their state convention. They had three first-place winners, two second, this is on state level. Three first-place winners, two second-place winners, two third-place winners, eight fourth-place winners, two fifth-place winners, two finalists, 27 proficiencies, not to mention $9,000 in scholarships. One young man, Stephen May, I had the honor to write a reference letter for him, and he won a scholarship for $8,000. So I was very, very proud and excited for them and appreciate all that they do. I would like to see the education spotlight, honor them at some future meeting too, Dr. Linker, if we could do that. Also, I am very encouraged that we continue to have a good relationship with our county commissioners, and it is imperative that we continue to work toward helping Iowa teachers get that 1% supplement increase. I think it would do more for morale. Teachers have got so many burdens and so many things on them, and I understand it's all together, but they have just got so many things that cause morale to be down. And if anything, this could really, really help, I do believe, boost our teachers' morale. And then finally, I wanted to echo what Mary said about that breakfast, that legislative breakfast. I thought that was a tremendous event. I had the honor to be there along with Walter and Mary and Caroline and you, Mr. Chairman, and Mildred. And I just thought that our legislators received the information that we gave very, very well. And I thought I was really encouraged by that. And I want to thank everybody that had a hand in that, because I think that went a long ways to help with our public relations and with our support with them up in the North Carolina General Assembly.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you staying within your two minutes.
Yes, sir.
Mark, you've got two minutes.
Those that know me know that I'm not going to pass up an opportunity to talk about charter schools and, Mr. Chairman, I think we disagree a little bit on the fact that charter schools are going to be here for the future. I disagree. I think they're going to be a flash in the pan, because I really feel like if you do your homework, and I certainly implore the media that's here tonight to do their homework and to publicize the differences about charter schools and traditional public schools, if you look at the data, and that's what the General Assembly holds our public schools accountable for increasingly in terms of the performance data, every single school that I know of, Pitt County and other surrounding counties, beat every single charter school that is in our area, performance-wise. And please take note of the types of students that they are serving in terms of where they came from, what their performance composite was before they left the traditional schools. And every single charter is in negative growth, which means they took a child and actually didn't teach them, in terms of where they performed. So please look at that information. People that look at charters and say, oh, this is where I want my child to go to school, I think you'll find by and large, they're money-making factories for those people that are being employed there, don't have state controls on them in terms of the salaries that they're paying them. People look at what superintendents of public schools are paid, principals of public schools are paid, and teachers are paid. Look at what these people that are running these charters are being paid, and they are setting their own salaries at the expense of the students that they're so-called "serving." Thank you.
When I'm 80 and you're 50, we'll have this conversation. All right. Sean?
And when Mark's 50, I'll still support every word Mark just said about charter schools. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to just emphasize the eloquent words of my colleague, Mr. Richard, with regard to charter schools. I had a conversation about charter schools with many people in my community here recently, and I will just defer to Mr. Richard's comments on all that. Inclement weather is inconvenient to everybody, and I'm willing to accept that inconvenience. I'm not willing to accept putting our children's lives at risk, and I'm very proud to be part of a school system that doesn't do that. I'd also like to commend every single bus driver out there. That is one of the hardest jobs in the United States of America. And then to hear Mr. Cowan get up here and say that since 2009, they are now making $75 more since 2009, we, our priorities are a little bit skewed there as a society, because we trust our bus drivers with our children. Parents in the community trust us with their children, and we have made the right decisions here during inclement weather to protect children. I'm very proud of that. And once again, I'd like to thank the representatives of the Parents for Public Education for being here tonight. They're always a strong presence at our meetings, and I certainly appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate it. Caroline?
I'd like to congratulate several high school students for winning eight prestigious Scholastic Art Awards last month. North Pitt High School's Taylor Camp, South Central's Mahmood, Haidil, Hunter Yardley, and Tony Houston, DH Conley's Jacklin Hobbs, Ramsey's Vargas, and Ian Gatlin are all to be commended for their incredibly creative and very thought-provoking and well-executed pieces. It's a great honor to win Scholastic Art Awards, and that was at the regional level with 60, over 60 counties. I'd also like to wish good luck to the JH Rose Muck Trial team that competes this coming Saturday against five other teams at Campbell Law School in Raleigh. Most importantly, I would like to take a few minutes to talk to parents about the letter grades that they received. They should have gotten the new school report cards early last month. We all would have preferred that every school had earned an A and met growth, and that should be our collective goal as a board, as a school system, and as a community. I personally believe that our school system should be held accountable, not only because we're taxpayer-funded, but also because we owe it to our families, businesses, and community to expect and achieve excellence in all of our public schools. I disagree with the emphasis placed on proficiency scores rather than a balance of growth and proficiency. Growth measures how much progress students make in one school year. Every parent has a right to expect that their child will make at least one year's worth of academic growth if their child regularly attends school, follows teacher's instructions, does their homework every night, and behaves well while they're at school. I commend the 18 schools that met or exceeded growth last year, and I expect that the remaining 15 schools are doing everything possible to meet growth this year. Our students need support from the community if we're going to achieve lasting excellence. There are lots of ways that we can do this together. Everybody who cares about Pitt County's future can have a role to play. There are many ways to have an impact. All of you are invited to be part of the solution. Just talk to any principal or any one of us on the board, and we'll be happy to identify ways for you to get involved.
You told me you had it timed, so that was good. All right. Ms. Mildred, make it 100%. Two minutes.
I'd like to detail everything everybody said to that about our children. In addition to that, I'd like to highlight Kyra Miles, who won first place in Science Olympiade. She's at DH Conley, and she's the new president of the Pitt County Council, one of my four agents. Also, I'd like to congratulate Alpha Caph, Alpha Sorority, for sponsoring this annual Black History Quiz Bowl, which had lots of Pitt County school students engaged. And the Cornerstone Youth were the first-place winners at Pitt County All-Stars. My team was second place. And the Alpha Pharaohs were third, and all other students that participated got rewarded for their work learning about African-American history, and they did a great job. Also, I'm working on the North Carolina Farm Bureau Initiative that I work on every year, Ms. Mary Williams is assisting with that. We've already been to North Pitt High School during their annual 12th grade outreach to get them to go to college and everything. Also, JH Rose has applications to South Central, and we hope that other schools would get them and get those kids. Application field's out, Farm Bureau pays for this. The dates are July, June 21st through the 26th. Deadline for the application is March 30th, and I recruit for Farm Bureau and represent NCANT on that effort. And also, College Roundup is coming up, March 14th, at Edgecombe Community College from 9:00 AM to 3:00, and we're asking all our students here if you want to go and meet the recruiters from three different states or more. You take your certified copies of transcripts, you can get accepted on the spot, and you can get waiver of those tuition, the admission fees. So that's my report for tonight. And CIAA basketball tournament was this weekend in Charlotte, and we had some Greenville students playing among those 12 schools. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Sean made the motion. Caroline, sec, all those in favor? Say aye. opposed.